I pledge allegiance to the twenty five. The United States of America and to the Republic of America, which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, three A minutes of the regular meeting of the Laquan County Land Bank, held January twelfth, two thousand eighteen.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
Three B check received February five, two thousand eighteen from Comcast in the amount of two hundred sixty-four thousand sixteen dollars and fifty-four cents for quarterly franchise fee payment.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
I have one. The Scranton Fringe Festival is proud to present its first official encore performance weekend. Three popular and unique theatrical fringe works return to Scranton. All shows have been presented at some point over the three-year history of the Scranton Fringe Festival, celebrated as they gear up for twenty eighteen and all the amazing programming they have planned. All performances will take place at the Afa Gallery at five fourteen Laquan Avenue Thursday, February twenty-second through Sunday, February twenty-fifth. The performances, I think, will start at six P. M. I would also like to personally acknowledge and thank Connor O'Brien and the organizers of the Scranton Fringe Festival for all the excitement and commerce they have brought to downtown Scranton through the events of the Scranton Fringe Festival over the past three years.
Does anyone else have an announcement?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hoda-Wanitz.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, Scranton resident and taxpayer. Well, I have good news and bad news. The good news is, this morning, I paid my property taxes. So if I drop dead tonight, I can do so with a clear conscience because I have paid my federal, state, and local taxes. But then the question arises, what did I get for my money? Well, let's take a look at one item, this Knowles insurance list that I've been whining about for nine to ten months since March thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. And as I promised you and I gave you tonight, I made an Excel spreadsheet to compare the dollar values from the original list and the one that you gave me, Pat, last week. Now, I will remind you that the original backup proposal is much longer than the nine pages you gave me. Not included in your document was all the vehicles that are insured in Scranton, okay? But be that as it may, let's take a look at the information they did provide. Now, Marie came and brought to our attention the fact that two of the buildings on the list, the Albright Memorial Library and the Nancy K. Holmes Library, were not city property and haven't been so since January of two thousand ten. So in the new list, they have kindly deleted those properties, but they didn't have to research that at all. The only other deletion is the contents of the bathhouse at Weston Park. They still own the building, but there are no contents, apparently. And then they made three additions, which is at the end of your document that I gave you. There's a police highway office on North Kaiser Avenue for which we now have contents, but I couldn't find the building, so somebody else must own the building. And there's a juvenile police precinct at thirteen oh-two Jackson Avenue, which apparently is new, building and contents, and a DPW storage shed at fifteen-ten Ross Avenue, building and contents. And I guess they really couldn't research or come up with a good dollar value for the contents because the contents are like fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand, and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I assume those are guesstimates. But if you compare the dollar figures for the old buildings, the buildings that were not deleted, which was the heart of the list, okay, you'll see that there is absolutely no difference. So I got to ask you, what took nearly ten months to come up with this information? It didn't take ten months. I think they were stalling. They didn't want to give it out. And if it did take them ten months, then there's something wrong with the competency of the people that worked on this, okay? And I'm really suspicious to see that the dollar figures did not change because it's very possible that these dollar figures go back before two thousand ten because, remember, it included the Albright Memorial Library and the Nancy K. Holmes Library, which were not city property. So I'm not overly pleased with that and if, you know... I expect, you know, the municipal leadership, when asked to give me accurate information, or if you don't have it, say, "I don't have it and this is why." But this is just such a boondoggle, and I'm paying for this as a taxpayer. No, it's just not right. Having said that, do we have any other information on when we're going to get the Arcadis Stormwater Management Study information back to the public? Any hope for that document?
There's always hope.
There's always hope.
There's always hope.
Hope springs eternal. And I do hope that the administration is working feverishly on the two thousand seventeen audit because this is day forty-three of two thousand eighteen. And for anybody who has nothing better to do, tomorrow morning at nine-thirty at two-hundred Adams Avenue, I think it's courtroom two C, hearing on the LST lawsuit. So everybody should go because the next milestone will be February twentieth when they hear the Act five-eleven lawsuit. Hopefully, we get a decision on that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Louis Mar... Margano. I apologize.
Well, my name is Louis Marango. I live in South Side on Brook Street. I live in South Side. I live, as you say, I live in Brook Street. I've been living in my house for ten years. I moved to Scranton back in two thousand and eight. When there is snow rise, it's almost impossible for my wife to drive away when the car is parked uphill because of the snow and the ice. And basically, I have like a little demonstration in here. Basically, this is what happens whenever there's snow and ice in there. It just like slips and slides. Now, last Friday, for the first time in my ten years living in my house, we receive a ticket right here for parking downhill. Now, for the record, the only time that my wife parks downhill is when there's snow and ice because otherwise she'll get stuck and she won't be able to go to work in the morning. As you can see on the picture, it was like covered in snow and ice. Now, on February sixteen, twenty fifteen, Chief Graciano told the Scranton Times Tribune regarding expanded parking enforcement that enforcement must take a common sense approach. And basically, ticketing people that are just trying to avoid getting stuck in the snow is not common sense at all. Basically, my wife right now has two options whenever it snows. She can park uphill, get stuck in the morning, be late for work, possibly lose her job, or she can park downhill and risk getting a ticket from the Scranton Police Department. There's actually a third option, and basically it would be for us to move out of Scranton and not have to deal with this nonsense anymore. The thing is, I don't want to move. I like my house. I like my neighbors. The church where my kids had their first communion and confirmation is right across the street from my house. I love it where I live. I don't want to move. I don't want to leave Scranton. I like it where I live. But I think we're getting basically put into a position where basically, what do you do? Now, I just paid my property taxes, twenty-eight hundred dollars this morning, and my wage taxes, two thousand and eight dollars for last year. Now, according to the U.S. Census, the median household income in Scranton is thirty-eight thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. Our household income was fifty-nine thousand dollars. So chances are, if we move out, the city is going to lose a lot more revenue than what they're making out of this ticket, out of this twenty-five-dollar ticket. And I look at the budget and it says that the city is expecting to make three hundred thousand dollars out of parking enforcement. But my question is, how many people would you be driving out of the city, you know, because of all this enforcement? And now, just to put into perspective, there's some ordinances on the books right now. Four thirty-nine dash eighteen, for sale sign on parked vehicles. You happen to have a for sale sign on your car, you can be ticketed for it. There's a four thirty-nine dash sixteen, parking in an alley or a court. That one, the chief actually said on that Scranton Times article that was not going to be enforced unless, you know, cars were blocking traffic, which makes sense. And the best of all, four thirty-nine dash twenty, all-night parking. There shall not, there shall be no all-night parking of vehicles on the street or highway, and such parked vehicles shall be considered abandoned and may be tagged or removed under direction and in custody of any police officer. So basically, anybody that parks on the street overnight can be ticketed. Let's say, all I'm hoping is that, you know, in the future, the Scranton Police Department and the parking enforcement, because I know it's not the sworn officers are doing this, but basically the civilian enforcers, I hope that they basically use common sense, like Chief Graciano say, use common sense when giving tickets. Let's say, I mean, one thing is, you're blocking a highway, you're blocking a driveway, you're parking in front of a fire hydrant, that's perfect. I mean, I understand that. But basically, when you're ticketing somebody that's just trying to not get stuck in the snow so they can go in the morning to work, that's not common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will send a letter to the Parking Enforcement Division asking that they use discretion, especially when there's snowstorms. We did look into having exemption for wrong, basically it's wrong-way parking on the street where there's hills because you're not alone. There's a lot of hills in the city. Actually, our solicitor did look into it. Unfortunately, we can't legally do an exemption because of the state highway code. But there's certainly a situation where there should be some discretion on the part of the parking enforcement.
I think, and I appreciate that.
Especially when there's, when there's, when there's snow on the ground. So if we could send that letter, just asking for, you know, and you're not the first person that's brought this up to us, so we appreciate you coming.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lee Morgan?
Well, today I want to talk about quality of life. There seems to be a lot of people in this community having a lot of trouble, not just with this ordinance, but with plenty, just the gentleman before us talking about his ticket. And I think the problem we have here is the council itself, to be quite honest. I had received a stop-work notice like this here. See it? Okay. Well, it wasn't legal. There was nothing legal about it at all. I had to go to the magistrate and, and present law to the judge, to the magistrate. So I guess the city withdrew its complaint, but my problem is, how can a legislator like yourselves pass laws in conflict with state law? Okay? We need to move away from all this silliness because the people destroying this city are sitting right where you are. And that's the sad part. It's really beyond pathetic. Now, I had to take a day off from work, which cost me four hundred dollars, to go down and argue a case where I did absolutely nothing wrong, nothing, because I don't need the city's permission to maintain my property. And I don't need a city inspector coming up, putting stop-work notices on my, on my property. But you have created a law that's in conflict with law. And do you care? I don't think so. And I think that's the problem we've had in this city for a long time. And when you wonder, where has all of Scranton's population gone? They've put up with incompetent elected public officials for decades, not for one election cycle, but decades. And I think it's really pathetic, and I don't think the problem's going to get any better, to be really honest with you. I mean, you know, to be a resident in this city, my children say to me, "Dad, are you out of your mind? Why don't you just, why are you paying all these taxes? That city's a slum. Just move out." And the only answer that I've seen from this council is, we're going to keep rebuilding the downtown. Time after time, we're going to give every certain people with the right connections tax breaks. We're going to do things for certain people, and we're not going to worry about anybody else. So, and we're going to go hound all the people in the neighborhoods with these stop-work orders. Or we're going, what we're going to do even better than that is, we're going to go out and we're going to condemn as many properties as we can. Because in my opinion, what this city's doing is, it's moving, okay, property values from the neighborhoods. They're transplanting it to the downtown because, really, the downtown has no value. These big buildings have no purpose if you don't convert them into some kind of residential developments. Nobody's conducting business in downtown Scranton. So if you take all the residential rental properties, the rentals out of the neighborhoods and transplant them to the downtown, well, now you're creating value for people who own those buildings. And in the neighborhoods, just go through the neighborhoods, harass all the people who own property, badmouth all the people who came into town and bought small properties and investments and rentals, and badmouth them. Create all kind of ordinances about, they've got to have property managers, they've got to have this, they've got to have that, and they're not the problem either. The problem is Scranton's government. It starts with you and the mayor. And I think that when you see these court cases go down, you're going to find out just how silly Mr. Amoroso was, just how silly the P.E.L. was, and just how silly numerous councils and administrations were. And to sit here and get camera time and do nothing of any value for the residents of the city, I don't know. You know, they badmouth people who get assistance from the government. But what value do you bring, the five council members, to this city? Walk across the street and see what's going on for the college, the Adams Plaza. They're not going to pay a dime in property tax. Where's all the investment money for the neighborhoods? There is none.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
And that was the first bell.
You're welcome. Ron Elman?
Since I wasn't here the last two weeks, do I get fifteen minutes?
No, sorry.
There's no rollover plan.
Doesn't roll over.
You're hard on the run, you know that. Real quick about this gentleman's ticket. I had, I'll make this real quick. I had a flat, and I walked, I phoned my son to come fix it, and I walked over to the hospital for some coffee, and I got a ticket. And I took the receipt down to the girls, and they just immediately took care of it. They were very kind and professional. And I mean, things aren't written in stone down there. These are the people that I badmouth all the time, the Parking Authority. Well, first thing, I open up my paper and tear off, throw away that little sticker. There is more giveaways for downtown. When is this going to stop? This is just, how much, every time you give them a dime, taxpayers have to make it up You know, the future montage is the future around here. Commerce Boulevard, and that's the future. Downtown is the past. You know, what was good then isn't necessarily good now. It's continual. You're never going to make an utopia downtown, never. Every single time I've been downtown, there's parking everywhere. You don't even have to worry about parallel parking. You can move a few feet and pull in. It's just empty spaces. I don't know how, how long they can suffer. Just a monumental waste of money. Last week, paper, I think it was the week before, there was an article written by a lady in Wilkes-Barre that said, "DND Construction has spent fifteen million dollars downtown Scranton." Did anybody see that? I'd like to know where a fifteen-million-dollar project that they put up is. You didn't read that article? Big article in our local paper. DND Construction, two brothers, I don't know anything about them. I know they have three houses on the foreclosure list that they owe forty-two thousand dollars on. It seems like they could have paid some back taxes with part of that fifteen million. How about all these people downtown, these property owners up and down, every single street that's been in the paper, not paying their taxes? You just want to give them everything. When I walk my still unhoused broken puppy, I'm walking on slate sidewalks, must be a hundred and fifty years old, no curbs in our North Main Avenue. Then I have to read that my tax money is continually being poured into downtown. It's a shame. What are we going to do about? The taxes have just gotten, every time I talk to somebody at the grocery store, the taxes come up. Now, now, besides all the adversities in front of us, how in the hell is anyone going to pay for the schools? They don't seem the least bit, there's, there's no solving it for the school board. One thing they ought to do is get rid of the head of the school board, send her back to Atlanta. That'd save a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The only answer is bankruptcy. And everybody comes, all these legal people with their, "We'll go to hell if we file bankruptcy. We'll never get out of it." Town after town in California filed bankruptcy the last three or four years, and they're all in the black. Stockton's been on the news. Detroit was the worst city in the United States financially three years ago. Now they're building a twenty-seven-story office building downtown. In three years, they've turned around. We don't have, where were our future in three years? Where the world will this city be?
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Probably the same damn position we're in now if we don't get some new leadership. And you people should be doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address counsel?
Eric, give him counsel. John Morrow, Scranton resident, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of your having the vote tonight for the resolution opposing the current process of gerrymandering here in Pennsylvania. As we know, this is one of the worst states in the Union for gerrymandering with its districts. And despite recent lawsuits and rulings that have been handed down, this is still a significant problem that is an impediment to the true democratic process in this state. And I strongly support that you all vote in favor of this resolution, which is not binding in any fashion. It is sending a statement to the elected officials in Harrisburg in the General Assembly that we do want change here in Pennsylvania with our districting issues. And thank you very much for bringing this vote tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address counsel?
I was, been going through some older stuff, and early last year, the B.A. was talking and defending that they chose the first Stormwater Management, one of the higher bidders, and said that it would be about ten months to complete the, for Arcadis to complete their study. So perhaps during, since it's well over ten months, if any of you have any insight into what's holding this whole thing up, if you could share that in fifth order, at least one person of the public would like to know that. Next, yeah, I question the validity of that list, too, because at least Mr. Rogan should remember, the Jackson Street Juvenile Facility, when they put in the skate park there, the skateboarding park there, and it was in conjunction with that, I think that's over a decade. So I don't know, really, what's going on. But then I don't know that a lot. Now, moving on, we have an exit plan. And I'd like to start in the middle because one of these, under revenues, it says, "Other taxes are proposed to be maintained at current levels with the proviso that, for whatever reason, this city is unable to implement other associated initiatives in this plan, then the city will need to further adjust existing tax rates and/or reduce expenditures to maintain a balanced budget." So that's the setting, a truly balanced budget. And I would like to review some of those initiatives that have to be affected if we are to accomplish what the exit plan set out to do. So one thing, the coordinator recommends that pension plans include a provision to offset pension benefits by the amount of Social Security disability benefits received, and that offsets of this nature and due to other employment be strictly enforced by the city. Is that being enforced as yet?
Well, that's part of the third-party administrator's responsibility.
Oh, somebody else, okay. The city may develop a modified duty program which may be implemented across bargaining unit functions. Has a modified duty program been implemented or started?
I don't know.
What is the status? That would be nice to know. That the city undertake an analysis of the effects of transitioning city employees away from defined benefit pension plans to defined contribution retirement plans. This city may focus its analysis on one or more city departments, for example, nonrepresented employees. What is the status of that? What is the status of that undertaking?
I requested Senator Blake look into that. There's a glitch in the state law that does not allow for a 401K-type plan, so he's looking into that.
And when do you expect an answer?
Hopefully soon. I'll reach out to him next week and see where we're at.
Another one of those three strikes coming, I can see it. It is imperative for the city to review all available options that may potentially alleviate or eliminate this legacy cost over the city's long term. And that is the same, the same issue. So I hope there's something coming up. A debt management policy should be approved by the city council and the mayor. What is the status of the debt management policy?
We can check.
All elected officials should become familiar with the items, questions, and consideration on the checklist prior to voting in favor of the occurrence of additional debt. That is just something, that's, I don't know, how many of you have, have actually looked at the Government Finance Officers Association Debt Issuance Checklist of Considerations? Develop a fund balance policy. Status of that? Okay, even with the elimination of the aforementioned high coupon bonds, the city will need to further reduce its long-term liabilities, including, may I finish this one?
Sure.
I have lots more for next week. Obligations in order to create a structurally balanced and sustainable budget without unacceptably high tax increases. So I'll be back to go through the rest. I would think some of these things at least would be started or underway. It's sad that it's just another document, apparently. Set it on the shelf and let it collect dust. Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dobson, president, taxpayer. Oh, you ought to sing along, hallelujah. The elevator works and the overcharging Parking Authority tonight, on the Mulberry side. I seen a sign that says elevator working. I couldn't find a parking space out there, so it looks like something going on up the cultural center. Okay, getting back to, so that's announced. I see we have the final vote on the redistricting and elimination. And I would recommend that we have no more bosses. Somehow we have to learn to draw these lines by a constitutional amendment. I don't need anybody with their partisan. I read an article yesterday in the Times that out in California, you got a couple Democrats wound up almost in a fistfight over the way their party slandered things. So it just goes on and on and on. So hopefully, if we get a constitutional description of how this is to be done, and it's never to be done in a partisan interest, it might be a lot better. We might be a lot better off. And I have to question some of these quality-of-life things. It's kind of, kind of crazy how many things can change. Like on Alder Street by my house, people, you're really just going to slide backwards and wind up into somebody else's car if you park on the correct side of the street. None of the houses are on the downward side, so the Jewish school is there, the yeshiva school, so, you know, they, more or less, if they park correctly, then they're just burning out their transmission or sliding into their neighbor's car backwards. And once again, if any university or school or institution wants to give a pilot, that's fine, but a pilot is no strings attached contribution to the city and not for pre-concluded studies and not to spend on yourself. And it's just like, you're not legally obliged to give a pilot, so then don't call it a pilot, you know? Just keep it. Hundred seventy-five grand, 200 grand compared to what the money we blow through every year, it's not worth it. But it's the, it's the point of the matter, it's the principle of the matter. Now, I was down by a little gadget here, and it measures sound levels. And they weren't too high today because it didn't look like too much was going on down on Meadow Avenue. But it's something that a neighborhood association, it was $25. I use it so that I'm sure that my guitar and mandolin playing isn't emanating out into the street at 3:00 in the morning, because I assure you, I am nuts about music, you know? And if you come and see that I'm happy, see me through the window and you just want to be one of those people that toots their horn about something, I wave this and tell them, bye-bye. But it would measure, it would measure a lot of industrial noise. In fact, it's used by organizations, and you could see the, we're at about 70 decibels here. And 85 is eight hours a day. And any more, it starts to significantly reduce. So if you're in a neighborhood association and you want to buy one of these, you might get it at a music store or something like that, like Guitar Center, or there's some music stores still open in Scranton, up on Kaiser Avenue, maybe they can get you one. But it's a very useful device for me, because if I want to play, you have to wait for creativity, it doesn't just, you know, come along with a cup of coffee. And, well, we'll wrap it up with that. Oh, do I get my deluxe senior citizen discount on trash if I pay it this year early? Okay, because I didn't see anything.
You want everybody else.
You know, I want my deluxe senior citizen holiday discount.
Super special.
I'll pay you right on time.
All right.
I'll put, light a fire under Wayne down there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Um, real quick, because I know you guys want to get to your work. My name's Chris Bednar. I am the president of the Greater Scranton J.C.'s. As you guys know, we do a lot of work in the community. Our mission is to empower young people to make positive change, and this is the mission that we live. And I'm really pleased by the resolution to support Independence Commission that you have on the agenda tonight. When we were presented, we were presented something similar back last fall, and our body supports it unanimously. So I wanted to lend that support to you guys tonight as you deliberate and hopefully make a positive vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few brief comments to make. I'll be brief, and then I'll save everything else for agenda items. On January 29th, I made a request for a crosswalk to be installed on Olive Street, and that was for the runners to get to the Heritage Trail. This week, I'm going to be having a phone interview with one of the guys from Lockawatt Heritage Valley Trail. They have taken over some of the responsibilities of the crosswalks, and we'll get together and we're going to make sure that we get an additional crosswalk installed for the runners that actually do some parking or come from across Olive Street to there, because I know there's, there's been some issues. And the last we want is someone just go down there for some recreation, some run, and then get hit with a car. So I'm going to be speaking with someone from the HLVT this week, and we'll see if we can get that all squared away. Also, I just want to, and it's very hard to single out one thing that the Scranton Police does, because so many of them do so many things on a daily basis, it's almost, you know, dare I say insulting, just to bring one thing out and thank them for, because they just do so many things well. But in this particular case, I just want to throw a big thank you and a job well done to the Scranton Police Department yesterday for responding to a shot fired call down on Pittston Avenue. It was a very dangerous situation. They had streets for blocks and blocks closed off, going both on Pittston Avenue and then on other side streets in South Side. The situation was resolved quickly and without any officers using a weapon, and as peacefully as absolutely could be done. I know the citizens in that area were very concerned. I have family that live down there, like most of us do, and it was a very, it was a very scary situation for a brief period of time, and the Scranton Police, in accordance with some other police departments, did a fantastic job. And that's, you know, just one of the many things that they do well, and, you know, it's a privilege to have them in our city, and they really do a great job protecting us. And finally, before I wrap up, I just wanted to send a big congratulations to Adam Repont for, I don't know if most of you guys watch the Olympics, you know, I was home texting my family back and forth. My mom's in Florida this week, and, you know, we, we're all over, but we all come together for the Olympics like a lot of our families do. And it was just nice to see, his performance last night was fantastic. I know his community and as we and his family must be very proud of him, he did a great job. And that's all I have, and I'll reserve everything else for agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Donohue, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. Really, the only comment I have is in relation to the Gergos complaint last week about the situation on Meadow and Bird Street. Myself and Mr. Gahn went up and talked with the Gergos yesterday, and the only way to describe their situation is just unacceptable. The main issues I had with it is the fact that PA American Water only gave them a two-day notification. And I think the scope of the project required a lot more communication between PA American Water and the neighborhood. Also, you know, the notification they did give was like a flyer that you would get if they were cutting up your street or, you know, putting in a new waterman in your street, which although an inconvenience is significantly more minor than what they are actually dealing So, and another issue I have with it is also, you know, how does the city allow this to happen? So one of the things I'd like to request is that we put a request in for the permits that were issued for this project. And could we also see if there's a policy in place that would require work sites of this magnitude to be inspected, you know, during the course of the work? And that's all, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donohue. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want to echo Councilman Perry's remarks. My office, my real estate office is on the corner of Pittston Avenue and Hickory Street in the 400 block of Pittston Avenue. So I was pretty much in ground zero of what was happening yesterday. And we are very lucky to have a professional, as a professional police department as we have. They're exceptional. I don't think we all appreciate them as much as we should, and I just want to make that comment. I really do appreciate what they do on a daily basis and put their lives at risk, and yesterday was a perfect example. Finally, I, one brief comment, I'd like to make sure everybody knows that the first of the revised idea sessions will be next Thursday, February 22nd at 6:00 PM in council chambers. Scranton City Council will be the host. Councilman Gahn and myself will be the co-chairs of that particular session. The subject for the session will be small business retention and recruitment. What can we do better? And by the way, when I say "we," I mean the collective, we, the city council, this administration, the business community, the small business owner, the citizen, the consumer, we all have a stake in trying to grow our small business community. So what ideas do you have that will make the environment better for a small business owner? Please bring them. As I previously explained, the format is quite simple, the first 30 minutes or so, I'll wait for that to pass. First 30 minutes or so of the meeting will be dedicated to drawing out ideas on what we can actually do better. And the final 30 minutes or so will be to coalesce those ideas into a six workable and doable ideas that we as a council in the city and the community can get behind and make happen. So it'll be six ideas in 60 minutes. So I would urge anyone who has an idea on this subject to attend and participate. I will again remind everyone, everyone, that this is an idea session, it's not a complaint session. So come prepared for a positive brainstorming session and leave your complaints at the door. That's all I have for tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahn, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. I did ask in caucus tonight for an update on the issue we're having in the 800 block of Pittston Avenue. Several residents have complained about a property there, a storefront property, so we're continuing to reach out to the DPW in licensing and inspections there. The 1300 block of Brook Street, I continue to receive complaints, this is on East Mountain, about flooding up there. Been talking for quite some time with a gentleman who's very knowledgeable about the situation and what, what's really gone on there in the past few decades. So, Mrs. Reed, if we could get in contact with the DPW again, I can fail to do this in the caucus, but I can give you his information, and hopefully somebody from the DPW can get in touch with him. Mrs. Schumacher brought up the exit plan recommendations. I have read those, they're not something that I think should sit on a shelf and gather dust, because I think they're important. But if you remember, during the 2018 budget discussions, I asked the administration for an update on each one of those recommendations and what the status was, and I haven't received that yet. Mrs. Reed, so if we could send a letter asking for an update on each recommendation, I would appreciate that, because I do think it is important. Also, Mrs. Schumacher, you asked about, last week I believe, about, or the week before, about storm basins, how many storm basins are in the city, how many storm drains? The city planner replied that he doesn't think anyone has a real handle on that number. The latest information that the city received from Pennsylvania American Water Company lists 1,491 storm inlets. However, many of these drains, many of these drain into the combined sewer system and would remain the responsibility of the water company. The database also lists quite a few inlets that are unknown, so some of them are most likely city responsibility. And Mr. King reported that in the very near future, the city's proposing to issue an RFP for mapping services to find that number out, and then he lists a whole paragraph of regulations there. So I can give that to you if you like. The other request that I made this past week was regarding an article that was in the newspaper, February 2nd, concerning the Scranton Civil Service Commission's postponement of a fire department promotional test. So I had a few questions about that. We sent a letter to Jeff Mackey, who is the chairman of the Civil Service Commission. I would like them to explain the current process for the dissemination of information to union members regarding civil service tests. I'd like to know how that process has been handled in the past. I'd like to know the list of individuals other than the deputy fire chief who had access to the distribution of the testing material information. I also asked for a copy of all emails between the current Scranton Civil Service Commission members and city employees, and then an explanation on the process for selecting test books. Also, in looking at that information and becoming curious about the Civil Service Commission, I asked for a copy of the rules and regulations. Mrs. Reed was looking for that, and in that process, we found that the last copy we received is dated May 25th, 1999. So we did ask the Civil Service Commission for a complete set of rules and classifications that govern their decisions and that those would be updated. So I would appreciate that. As Councilman Donohue mentioned, he and I met with some of the neighbors on Meadow Avenue who were here last week and who have been affected by the American Water Drilling Project. And to say that their lives have been turned upside down because of this project is a complete understatement. As I mentioned last week, and it was confirmed in our meeting yesterday, neither the water company nor the city, in my opinion, did their due diligence in sitting down with these families and explaining the major inconvenience they would be facing for months due to this project. In conversations with them yesterday and last week, it was passed off to them as if it would be another run-of-the-mill water line replacement project that we often see throughout the city. It turns out, after being on the property, that heavy equipment, drills among other things, rattle their homes from 7:00 in the morning until 7:00 at night, constant vibration, and extremely loud noise that makes living conditions simply unbearable and, quite frankly, unbelievable. Not to mention the fact that there are quite a few elderly people Not to mention the fact that there are quite a few elderly people in this vicinity who are homebound and already have trouble getting out of their houses. The quality of life at these neighbors' homes has been diminished so greatly that I really don't know how they're able to live there at this point. Does this project need to be completed? Yes, there's no question. Did the city and the water company consider the lives of these people who this project would be affecting? In my opinion, absolutely not. And the most concerning part of the visit yesterday was the fact that many of the safety issues that Mrs. Gergo pointed out, some of the holes that had opened up in the backyard and in other places that were unsafe, were only addressed with fencing and other things once she had complained. So thankfully, there is somebody that is watching what's going on there. I would urge, as Mr. Donahue mentioned, that the city and the water company make sure that this work is being done safely and with the best interests of the neighbors in mind, and at least have the common courtesy not to drop off a one-page sheet of paper that makes it look like this is a run-of-the-mill project when it in fact is not. Finally, I would just like to take a minute and respond to a statement that Mayor Courtright put out the other day in response to the Attorney General's limited review of the Scranton Sewer Authority deal and the professional services. The mayor said that he and his administration were adamant from the very beginning that everything was done above board. However, critics and a lone council member, who I'm assuming they're referring to me, were adamant on making it look like things were done improperly. First of all, let me be very clear, that the mayor and his administration did more than enough on their own over the past year to make it look like things were done improperly. Let's not forget, and this wasn't included in the mayor's statement, the many months of stonewalling that this council and the public experienced at the hands of the mayor and the Scranton Sewer Authority. They continuously evaded questions and stubbornly withheld public information. One of the mayor's biggest campaign contributors and chairman of his campaign, who also happened to be special counsel to the deal to the tune of $200,000 via a verbal agreement, no written contract, went even as far as suing me for slander, defamation, and libel when I simply requested backup documentation detailing the work that he did. And keep in mind, I had been respectfully requesting this for months. The lack of transparency, coupled with the lawsuit, with the public outcry for answers, led this council, not just the lone critic, all four members up here, all five of us, along with all five of Dunmore's councilmen and Mayor Tim Burke, to request that Mayor Courtright and the Scranton Sewer Authority Board invite the Auditor General in to provide a complete and full review of the sale. The Sewer Authority Board, Mayor Courtright's appointees, voted against it, not once, but twice. That's certainly not a great way to instill any confidence from this legislative body or Dunmore or the current mayor of Dunmore, Tim Burke, and the people of Scranton, to let us know that this deal was in fact done above board. Also, let's keep in mind the Auditor General, his statements. In May of 2017, he said, and I quote, "While the Scranton Sewer Deal is done, it is possible the results of our review could serve as an example for other Pennsylvania municipalities should they decide to privatize their utilities." As recently as January 8th, 2018, the Auditor General said, and I quote, "After five years, the number-one consistent request that I receive and am legally barred from conducting is to audit municipal authorities." He sent a letter to all state legislators encouraging their support for Senate Bill 597, which this council also sent a letter, passed a motion supporting, which would allow the Department of the Auditor General to audit municipal authorities, closing a major gap in accountability and transparency in municipal water, parking, and sewer authorities. The Auditor General goes on to say that "the lack of state review of authorities that manage billions of dollars and provide critical services such as water supply does a great disservice to all Pennsylvanians. When the Philadelphia Parking Authority and Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority responded to public pressure to allow my team in, we uncovered wide-ranging problems that led to dramatic reforms at both entities. By authorizing my department to conduct financial and performance audits of various municipal authorities, the bill would give my qualified auditors the ability to dig deep so we can recommend changes that could possibly cut costs and potentially reduce the need for the authorities to increase fees for the residents they serve." And he finally noted that the first authority where he would send his team would be the Scranton Sewer Authority. I'd like to remind Mayor Courtright that asking questions, requesting information on one of the largest and most complex deals that involved privatizing a utility in Pennsylvania is not being a critic, or it's not impeding progress. It's called doing my job. Criticism, asking questions, debating, dissenting, these are necessary for any functioning democracy. One of city council's many roles, which the mayor should understand since he was a councilman for many years, is to be able to freely and independently exercise its legislative oversight. After all, we work for the people to ensure that their money is being spent responsibly, not for campaign donors or special interests. I appreciate the Attorney General's review of professional services, but it was, as noted in the letter, limited in its scope. The office did not conduct a full audit of the authority. Why has Mayor Courtright, along with his appointees to the Sewer Authority Board, refused to invite the Auditor General in for a full, complete audit of the authority? If the mayor is so adamant that everything was done above board, then why not ask the Auditor General to come in and audit the authority? Again, I ask, why not, Mr. Mayor? I would ask him again to invite the Auditor General in, and let's put this thing to bed once and for all. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gawen. I only have one comment tonight, and it was already mentioned by Councilman Perry and Councilman Evans. I do want to thank our police department. I don't think they get enough credit a lot of times for risking their lives, and it was a very scary situation in South Scranton the other day, and luckily it was a happy resolution with the individuals apprehended without anyone being seriously hurt. So I want to thank them for all their professional hard work to keep the residents of Scranton safe, and that is all. Thank you.
Five B for introduction and ordinance establishing permit parking on the easterly side only of the 300 block of Taylor Avenue, from 316 to 330 Taylor Avenue.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five C for introduction and ordinance amending file of the council number 171994 entitled "An Ordinance as Amended Authorizing the Governing Body of the City of Scranton to Enact a Waste Disposal and Collection Fee for the Purpose of Raising Revenue to Cover the Waste Disposal and Collection Costs Incurred by the City of Scranton for the Disposal of Refuse by Imposing a Waste Disposal and Collection Fee of $300 for Calendar Year 2018, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter."
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five D for introduction and resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the City of Scranton to enter into a loan assumption agreement with Carl Von Luger LLC, wherein Carl Von Luger LLC will assume the loan amount of $40,000 Terra Preta LLC received from the City of Scranton through the Community Development Block Grant Program, project number is noted.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five E for introduction and resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a license agreement between the County of Lackawanna, a political subdivision of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and the City of Scranton, a political subdivision of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, to permit the county to use utility pools owned by the city for the purpose of hanging fiber-optic communication lines for the new Lackawanna County Government Center.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five F for introduction and resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the City of Scranton to enter into a loan-to-grant agreement and make a loan grant from the City of Scranton's Business and Industry Loan-to-Grant Program, project number is noted, in an amount not to exceed $250,000, to Delta Medics PC to assist an eligible project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five G for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the submission of the grant application by the grant manager of the City of Scranton, Lackawanna County, for a Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Green Light Go Program grant to replace the traffic signal at Greenridge Street and Wyoming Avenue, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept and disburse the grant funds in the amount of $135,200 to replace the traffic signal at Greenridge Street and Wyoming Avenue.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, six A, no business at this time. Seventh order, seven A, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, file of the council number two, 2018, amending file of the council number fifty-eight, 2016, as amended, entitled "Establishing a Registration Program for Residential Rental Properties, Requiring All Owners of Residential Rental Properties to Designate a Property Manager for Service of Process and Prescribing Duties of Owners, Property Managers, and Occupants by Amending Section Three Definitions (Tenant) to Add a Definition Under the Letter H."
What is the recommendation for the chair for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item seven A.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawen?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven A legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number Ten, 2018, as amended, a resolution in support of a Citizens Commission for Legislative and Congressional Redistricting.
As chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend a final passage of item seven B as amended.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I wasn't here to comment on this when it was introduced, but as, when Mr. Gawen brought this up, as I am now, without hesitation, support this. This, far too long by both sides, has been used as a political weapon, and, you know, does this go far enough? Possibly not. There are other things we can do, but this is a good first step, and I do support this.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawen?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven B as amended legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Moving to adjourn.